On June 3rd. In addition, as marked on the agenda, we will table item 4B at the request of the applicant. We have several proclamations and recognition under the mayor's report. Before we get into that, I just want to also introduce Jeffrey Tucker, who is filling in as our city attorney tonight for Scott Cochran. And I'd like to note Jessica Melton. This will be her last city council meeting with us. She's been a management fellow with the city for the last year. She's done an excellent job. She has taken a job in the private sector. She'll be working with governments. She is one of a string of really very good success stories we've had with management fellows in the city of Smyrna. We're very lucky to have each and every one that we've had. And Jessica, I want to take this moment at the beginning of the meeting to thank you for your work, for helping us, for believing in the city of Smyrna, for moving to the city of Smyrna where, in the least immediate future, you plan to continue residing. We appreciate what you've done and the way you've handled it and your professionalism. You're a very smart young woman and you're going to do very well. Thank you for being part of our community. We have a proclam-- yes. Very appropriate. We have a proclamation and recognition of the American Cancer Society Relay for Life Week, which is May 26 through 31st. I'll ask Ron Fennell if he would read that proclamation and present it, please.
Cancer Society and Kimberly Killibrew. And I want to present this to them. And let's see. A proclamation by the mayor in the city of Smyrna. American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Whereas Relay for Life is the signature fundraising activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during the Relay for Life supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, and by finding cures for cancer and by fighting back. And whereas Relay for Life helped fund more than $150 million in cancer research last year alone, now therefore be it resolved that I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 16th to 31st, 2013, as Relay for Life Week in Smyrna, and encourage citizens to participate in the Relay for Life Vining's Smyrna Event at the Lovett School on May 31st, 2013, at 6:00 PM, offered under seal the 20th day of May, 2013, by the mayor of Smyrna. Please, Amy and Kimberly, if you could join us at the podium.
Let's do a quick photo, Jennifer. Sorry, I was looking in the way. Okay.
She know how you can she send that picture?
Oh, yes. You can send her a picture.
Can you send me a picture so?
Here.
Or do you want to take one with my camera? Thank you.
Bear with us.
While they're posing for pictures, I'll simply say I doubt there's a family in America that hasn't been touched by cancer. To say we appreciate what you do is an understatement.
Thank you very much. My name's Amy and this is Kim Killibrew. And we're-- I'm with the American Cancer Society. And Kim is one of our committee members. She's our survivorship chair for the Relay for Life of Vining, Smyrna. She's also a cancer survivor herself, so we're very excited to have her with us. The Relay for Life of Vining, Smyrna, as Ron said, is on May 31st. We would really love to have everyone in the community come out and join us. It's going to be a great night, starting at 6:00 PM at the Lovett School. Have lots of fun activities for the whole family. Bounce houses for kids and lots of food and bands playing. And it's just a really great time to give back. We'll have some onsite fundraising going on and people walking the track for the whole evening, actually. It's 12-hour event. So it's definitely a very special thing to be a part of. We do a luminaria ceremony where we light the track with luminarias that are lit in honor of cancer survivors. And it would be really great for everyone to come out and join us. And Kim, did you want to share anything?
Well, you know, and if you know of anybody, or I'm sure somebody has been touched by cancer and you know a survivor, we would love for them to sign up and be able to be a part of the Relay for Life event. We're going to honor them and we're going to celebrate more birthdays, as I just did actually at the Cobb Relay. And I'm looking forward to this event as well. And each year that my birthday rolls around, you go, oh, gosh, another birthday. But you know what? When you've had cancer, it means a lot more. So, and I'm just glad to be celebrating another year. Hope you all will come out and join us. It's going to be a fantastic, fabulous event. And we will have the founder of Relay--
Yes.
--with us.
Yes, Dr. Gordy Klett, the man who first started Relay in 1985. He's actually flying in from Tacoma, Washington, to come to this Relay, which is a very rare thing. He does not travel across country often. I can assure you of that. So it's really exciting that he's planning on coming to this event right here in our community. So we're excited to have him as our honorary chair, and hopefully everyone will join us.
And for those who are watching on TV or watching this recording and want to participate, you can contact us at Smyrna-- contact me, rffennell@smyrna.gav, to sign up for the Smyrna team. We want to properly represent Smyrna in numbers, both in warm bodies, in survivors, but also in your contributions. If you can't make it to the event, you know you can't make it, your check can arrive. We would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
All donations are appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ron.
Thank you both of you very much. We also have a proclamation and recognition of Poppy Day, May 25th. I know Marilyn Roy and some representatives of the American Legion Auxiliary are present with us tonight. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Susan Wilkinson if she would present our proclamation and read it.
Thank you. This is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna for Poppy Day. Whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizens, soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower now. Therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim May 25th, 2013, as Poppy Day, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. So, and this is witness, whereas, and signed and sealed by the city of Smyrna on this day, the 20th of May, in the year 2013.
Thank you. If you'd present that. Would you all like to speak while she's coming?
Absolutely. You know I always have to speak. Anyway, we would like everyone to know that we are going to be at our favorite locations. The Kroger down here on South Cobb and Concord, the Kroger on Atlanta Road south of 285, and the Walmart on the East West Connector, both on Saturday and on Sunday, the 25th and 26th, offering poppies and, of course, hoping to collect a lot of donations. These poppies are actually made, as you know, by our disabled veterans, and we hope everybody will accept one and offer a great contribution. And like Art said, your checks are welcome. If you can't actually come out, you can send a check made to the American Legion-- don't forget the word auxiliary-- and put in the memo section for poppies. American Legion Auxiliary, Unit 160. We'd also like you to know that we're going to be with you at the Village over here for the Monday, for the memorial service, with, again, with our poppies. And after that, the American Legion Post 160 has a big barbecue that everybody's invited to. And today I was asked by one of the editors of our, one of our local newspapers, what the community could do to help the Legion. And we have all kinds of activities. Of course, we have our charity events all year that are everything from raising thousands of dollars for Cobb Special Olympics. We ship boxes to the soldiers abroad. We collect money for what they call Operation Homefront, helping the children of soldiers have everything from backpacks to pencils and paper for school. And all year long, we have activities at the Legion that you can come and join us for all kinds of things. If you're a woman with any kind of relative that's military, deceased, or living, we'd love you to join our auxiliary. Anything else you want to know?
No, actually, you'll make available to the members in the audience--
Absolutely. And you too.
They are not for sale, but donations are appreciated.
Donations are greatly appreciated. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to get a poppy. Next item on our agenda is recognition of Austin Hibbard, Boy Scout Troop 61, who's just made Eagle Scout for his leadership project.
Ann Kirk, could you come forward, please?
I'd like to ask Councilman Ron Fennell if he would introduce Austin and make a presentation.
Austin started working with us in our office before Christmas of this year to identify a project that would be acceptable to the Eagle Candidate Board. And not only did he take on one project, he took on two quite ambitious projects. Would you like to bring your family and your scoutmasters up, please?
Let me introduce some of these people. First, I'd like to, of course, thank Mr. Bob Higgins over here. He's my assistant scoutmaster. Next, here is my mom, Jane Hibbard. Next is my father, Michael Hibbard. Next is my other assistant scoutmaster and personal friend of ours, Mr. Clay Milner. And next is Mr. Milner's son, Mr. Benjamin Milner.
Thank you, Austin. I know you worked really, really hard on these projects. I'm going to let Councilman Fennell present you with something.
For those of you who know anything about scouting, it's one of the rare treats in a young man's life, to contribute to the greater community. But pursuing Eagle Scout is a huge endeavor. For those who have achieved that milestone, almost anything else is just another step along the way, because it's quite an honor. This young man has demonstrated with his commitment to the community, not just in one project, which most scouts take on at best, to do two and do them well, is something that ought to be lauded. And this is, this is the future of Smyrna and our country, and we applaud you. Thank you for your hard work. Now, we're streaming this live on television, so if you will all circle around and face this direction, I have one last thing that I would like to do. And I have my notes, because I don't want to miss any of this. Those of you who know scouting know that they revere the Stars and Stripes, the American standard that is our flag. And in the summer, every year when they gather in camp, they have a ceremonial retirement of the flag ceremony to formally dispose of flags that have served out their life cycle. I brought a flag that's special to Ward 7 resident. It happened to be my neighbor, Charlie Love. Charlie Love was an American hero. He won two distinguished flying crosses, a Bronze Star with a V for valor, and 76 other air medals. He died of a lung disease as a complication from Agent Orange that he was exposed to in his days in Southeast Asia. This flag flew over his house from his death till yesterday, when I asked if we could use this flag, which had been far past its useful life, but his wife didn't want to retire it until she knew it had a proper place. She was honored that we were asking that this flag be a part of the ceremony in proper retirement. And Charlie is now buried in Arlington National Cemetery as an American hero. And his wife of 41 years, Jeannie Love, presents this flag in his honor and memory so that it's properly entrusted for proper disposal. Thank you, Austin. Thank you. Did I move too quickly for you? Thank you all.
Austin, any parting final words of wisdom for us?
Once again, just thank you to all the people you see here today. They were all a huge instrumental part in the carrying out of my Eagle Scout project. And I will say, as of Thursday evening, I am officially an Eagle Scout.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I will note that Charlie, our departed Charlie, was also a scout, so his wife felt it quite appropriate to deposit the flag with you. Thank you.
Austin's projects consist of a bunker for soil and materials at the community garden and also a wash table. These were part of the original plans for the community garden, and hundreds of people will make use and enjoy these amenities for many, many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann Kirk. Thank you, Austin Hibbard, for your projects that will mean so much to our community for, as Ann said, for many years to come. Moving into the formal part of our agenda, item four. Item A, public hearing, approval of code amendments to Section 402 and 709 of the city zoning ordinance to add non-emergency ambulance services to the list of permitted uses under the limited commercial zoning district for the city of Smyrna. Mr. Taylor, background, please.
Yes, Mr. Sitting-in Mayor for the evening, Acting Mayor for the evening. This was a request from an owner of a property on Concord Road who would like to have a tenant to have non-emergency ambulance services that would be dispatched out of this location. Staff has been working on it, and we still have a little bit more work to do, as discussed in the pre-meeting tonight. And so therefore, we're going to ask that this be tabled until the June 3rd meeting.
This is a public hearing that's been properly advertised. Is anyone here to speak on this issue? Yes, sir, would you like to speak? Mr. Tucker, would you swear him in, please? Please identify yourself and make your comments.
Okay. I'm Durrewood Pierce, and I have the property in question. I wasn't aware that there was any other questions to be answered. I thought that everything had already been covered. So that's really a question more than a comment.
We thought so too, but in our agenda meeting prior to this meeting tonight, we ended up with some questions that we couldn't answer about our taxi ordinance and what's the difference between a non-emergency medical transport vehicle and a taxi? And are there any taxi requirements that need to apply? Or do they not apply? And we just weren't able to answer all the questions that we had, so, you know, I'll just speak personally. I'm not opposed to your request, but I think we've got some legal questions that we need to answer before we're prepared to vote on it tonight.
We're going to take it up in two weeks.
Two weeks. Plan would be to take it up in two weeks. We've asked staff to come back with answers to the questions and be prepared to move forward with the vote on June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd. This falls under the Community Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Andrea Bluestein. Ms. Bluestein?
Thank you. At this time then, I would like to make a motion to table the approval of code amendments to Section 402 and 709 of the city zoning ordinance to add non-emergency ambulance services to the list of permitted uses under the limited commercial zoning district, city of Smyrna. And it will be tabled until the June 3rd meeting.
We have a motion by Ms. Bluestein.
I'll second. I'll second.
Seconded by Susan Wilkinson. Any discussion? Motion is approved 4-0. Thank you very much. Item 4B, public hearing. Zoning request Z13-002, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional, 6.76 acre tract and land lot 335, known as 4160 and 4176 North Cooper Lake Road. Joey Romano, the applicant. Mr. Taylor, background, please.
Give me one second here. Yes, the applicant, Joey Romano, is proposing to rezone a 6.76 acre tract from R15 to RAD conditional, land lot 335 to 4160 and 4176 North Cooper Lake Road. The city engineer, as well as Councilman Welch, has, they've both played a pretty critical role in getting this project to this point. And unfortunately, both are out of town today, and we felt the need to have both of their participation necessary, so therefore, we're going to ask that this be tabled until the June 3rd meeting as well.
And we also had a letter from the applicant requesting tabling, did we not?
Correct.
From Garver Sam, the attorney representing the applicant?
That is correct.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? The record will show there is none. This is currently in Ward 7. Councilman Ron Fennell, a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I propose to table, and I make a move to table Z13-002, zoning request Z13-002, to June 3rd, 2013.
We have a motion by Mr. Fennell. Seconded by Susan Wilkinson. Everyone, please vote. Motion is approved 4-0. Thank you. Item C, 4C, public hearing, zoning request Z13-006, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for a 4.3 acre tract located in land lot 448, known as 1044 Fleming Street and 1031 and 1041 Patter Springs Street, the applicant being Brad Thompson. Mr. Taylor, background, please.
Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, the applicant is Brad Thompson, and he is seeking approval to rezone from R15 to RAD conditional that would create 19 residential homes at a density of 4.42 units per acre with no land use change from moderate-density residential will be required for this rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the zoning request at the April 8, 2013, meeting, and recommended approval by a vote of 6 to 0. Community Development also recommends approval of the rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional with conditions.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to speak on this request? I know Mr. Thompson is here. The record will show, other than Mr. Thompson, there's no one present. Turn this over to Ms. Councilwoman Terry Nullwitz, and I'm sure we'll hear a presentation by Community Development.
Thank you, Councilman Lenica. Yes, I would like to invite Ken Sedgwick forward at this time to give a little more background information on the project.
Thank you. It's sort of with pride, I guess, that I say that we bring this to you, because it's showing the economy is turning around, in the sense that this is the second or third sort of greenfield development, as we call it, to come back, meaning that this is a residential development on land that did not have a subdivision already approved on it. So we have now starting to come out of the absorption of homes that we had originally planned back as far as 2008, to now actually needing new lots for this. So this is one of the early ones on that. And this is coming to you out of the Planning Commission with a 6O approval recommendation. Existing zoning is R15 to put in the 19 single-family lots. A zoning change is requested, and that is our RAD classification. It becomes conditional, because we are indeed attaching some conditions on that. The existing, as well as the proposed land use, however, are identical, so there is no change needed for any of that. This is where the property is located. We have given you both addresses in the sense that it will have access off of Powder Springs, but it also touches the extended backside of, on its backside of Fleming. So that's why Fleming and Powder Springs have been listed. This is the proposed site plan for the lots. As you can see, it's just a cul-de-sac. There is some city-owned right-of-way that is there, that actually part of that, part of this development will also be discussed in another item tonight. This shows where the sewer, I mean, the stormwater detention area is. There is a five-foot right-of-way dedication that's required along Powder Springs. That's a normal requirement when we are below our standard right-of-way. And there is a five-foot sidewalk proposed, both along Powder Springs as well as within the subdivision itself. There's a proposed passive park that will be at the backside accessed off of the cul-de-sac. This is the proposed tree plan. And although these are somewhat dark on the screen, this does give you an idea of what the proposed home elevations would be, using other examples. This is what subject property looks like, and adjacent property. Staff, as well as the Planning Commission, recommending approval for the 19 detached single-family units with the standard conditions that have to do with the composition of the home, protective covenants with an HOA, the common space requirements. The detention pond has already been discussed. All utilities shall be underground. Any traffic improvements that are necessary deemed by the city shall be the developer's responsibility. The subdivision entrance requirement of brick pavers. The development of any streets must conform to our requirements. No debris can be buried on the lot. Decorative streetlights within-- Decorative streetlights within the development are required, must comply with the tree ordinance, and then all landscape plans have to be done by a registered landscape architect, and then all yards and common areas are to be sotted. Those are our standard conditions. You see that every time we deal with a rezoning. The special conditions that are unique to this particular site have to do with the next conditions. The minimum setbacks would be front as 20 feet. The interior side is five feet with a minimum building separation of 10 feet. The street side is 10 feet and the rear is 20 feet. Those are pretty typical setbacks. There's nothing unique about that. Each home will have at least 1,800 square feet. A floor area, the proposed homes, will actually be larger than this minimum. We do require a 22-foot minimum length for your driveway. Each home shall be, shall have a fire sprinkler system. The developer is responsible for an eight-inch water main extension. Again, the stormwater management facility shall be located on any other proposed lots. It has to be on its own separate lot, which is shown in the plans. Talked about the right-of-way dedication is number 20 already, and 21 picks up sidewalks. 22 is restricting it to the approval of site plan that he has submitted. It's dated May 13th, and then are bound to the elevations. And if there are any changes to those elevations, it has to be approved by the Director of Community Development. And with that, I will answer any questions. It really is a fairly simple request. It's a cul-de-sac coming off the Powder Springs.
I have some questions that might be best answered by Mr. Thompson, if he...
We're going to leave you with the site plan.
Mr. Tucker, does he need to be sworn in?
Yeah.
He's the applicant, so no. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you for being here tonight. We're looking forward to having new neighbors, and I think it'll be a good asset to the community. I have a few questions, though, with regards to, and these are more just clarification than anything else, and they're questions that have been brought to me by residents in the area who, again, are happy to see a community going on that site. But the, one of the questions is, who will be responsible for maintaining the passive park?
It'll be the residents.
Okay, the HOA?
The homeowners association.
Okay, great. And then I know that proximity to the new elementary school is probably going to be an appealing factor to a lot of buyers and families who are going to live on this street. These families will all be in the walk zone for the elementary school. They're too close for the county to run buses. How will you address making sure that these families have access to Fleming Street and the new elementary school?
Well, you and I talked about this in previous, but basically what the plan is, is that we'll do a natural pathway through that passive park. That's actually where the existing house sits now, so there will be some open spaces. It will be very easy to make a path from the cul-de-sac to Fleming Street. And if we decide to put a fence up, we will put a gate there, of course, so that access will be very simple.
Okay, great. And then the last question that I have is, and you know this because they're on the plan, but there are a lot of specimen trees back there, particularly towards the back of the lot. And I know it's too soon to be at the point of the conversation about which specific trees are going to be preserved. Do you intend to try to preserve some of the larger trees that are back there?
As always, we'll do everything we can to save the trees that are savable. A lot of times, an arborist will say, and city ordinance dictates that trees are not savable, when sometimes they are. But there are a number of trees, of course, that sit in the middle of building paths, in the middle of the street, and they have to, obviously have to come down.
Are you comfortable with the city's tree ordinance? It has, it changed a few years back. I just want to make sure that you have all the information that you need.
It's much better than the city of Atlanta's.
I'll take that as a compliment.
And I've worked on both in committee, so...
Better than the city of Atlanta, and we're still a tree city 10 years running, so that's win-win.
It is. And it's important. I mean, these are, these, I mean, I know people look at developers often as, we don't care about trees, what we do. We also know that it helps sell properties. And the reason people want to live in this community is because of its beautiful, big old trees that are throughout the area.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Fennell.
Ms. Thompson, thank you for having the confidence to continue building in Smyrna and bringing quality product and neighborhoods. We appreciate that. As you see the economy, you've seen enough to invest. This gives us hope and a positive encouragement. The price point of these houses, again, is going to be in what range?
I'm going to publicly state it's in the low 3s to mid 3s. I actually anticipate that it'll be higher than that.
Very good.
As, for the record, low 3s to mid 3s.
Okay. And we hope that your experience with Smyrna to date has been a pleasant one, and we want to encourage opportunities as we continue to grow as a municipality. And thank you for investing in Smyrna.
Well, I want to say I've been working in the city of Smyrna since 1996, and it is my favorite place to be and my favorite place to work. And as soon as my kids get old enough, we're going to move here.
Excellent.
That's good to hear. When do you think you'll begin?
We anticipate probably moving dirt or starting to take down some of those beautiful trees September, excuse me, August. Are there any other questions?
Councilwoman Wilkinson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just wondering if you could explain to us about the drives. I know sometimes these communities have common drives, but I was looking on here, and I think I see that they're going to be, the garages are going to be in the front, and then the drives will be in the front as well?
Yes, ma'am. I've done both, front and rear. And what I have found with, I've done actually probably more rear than I've done front, but the problem with rear entry drives is it eats up the backyard and tends to dissuade families because you eat up all your backyard with driveway and garage. And so I have found, like, in this case, I feel like it's a much, it's a much better approach to use front entry. I don't like garage doors on the front of a house. I think most people would probably prefer not to see them. However, the alternative is to put it in the back and eat up green space and, of course, the backyard with concrete, which is just not really a great alternative. And we can do things with the architecture on the front to soften those garage doors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from council? Ms. Nullwitz, a motion please.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I would like to move for approval of zoning request, agenda item, 4C. Thank you. It is Z13-006. This is a rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional. It's a 4.3 acre tract, land lot 448-1044. It's, I'm sorry, it's land lot 448. It is 1044 Fleming Street and 1031 and 1041 Patter Springs Street. The applicant who is present tonight is Brad Thompson. This is with all stipulations. Everything outlined in the presentation tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Nullwitz, second by Councilman Fennell. Mr. Thompson, just for the record, are you okay with the proposed stipulations as laid out by Community Development?
I am.
Any further questions, discussions? Call for the vote. Motion is approved 4-0. Good luck, sir. Take good care of our future residents.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Item 4D is a public hearing. Zoning request Z13-009. It's a reversion of zoning from RAD conditional to R20 on a 1.854 acre tract located in land lot 532 at 1315 and 1331 Cooper Lake Road. Sandra Ladensky, the applicant. Mr. Taylor, the background please.
Yes, sir. On April 21st, 2008, the mayor and council approved the annexation and rezoning requests from R20, which was the county designation, to R12 conditional for six single-family homes. But during the economic downturn, the subject property was foreclosed on and the subdivision was never developed, and so therefore no development permits were issued for the development of the site. Per Section 1201 of Appendix A of the City of Smyrna Code, if no affirmative action has been taken on a conditionally zoned property within 12 months of the mayor and council approval, the property shall revert back to its original zoning. Community Development and other city departments have reviewed the zoning request and have found that the proposed rezoning to be in conformity with the city's future development plan and city ordinances, and therefore we are prepared to recommend approval of reverting the zoning back to R20.
This is an advertised public hearing. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak on this issue? The record will show there are none. This is located in Ward 7. Councilman Ron Fennell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was outlined, this is a rare occurrence. We normally do not go from a more open and back to, revert back to a single-family situation. We do this so rarely that I'm pleased that we're able to accede to the request of the new property owner, Sandra Ladensky, to build a home on a nice lot in Smyrna along Cooper Lake Road. And I therefore move to approve Z13-009 zoning request for the reversion of zoning from RAD conditional to R20 at 1331 and 1315 Cooper Lake Road.
We have a motion by Mr. Fennell. We have a second from Councilwoman Susan Wilkinson. Well, actually Andrea Bluestein. Speech to it. Any discussion by the council?
Exactly.
Motion carries 4 to 0. Thank you very much. Item 4E is an item for the mayor and council to approve the abandonment and conveyance of an alley parcel property as described in the attached legal description and as depicted on a boundary and topographical survey of Patter Springs Street dated March 1, 2013, and being shown as a 16-foot alley parcel containing .01377 acres, approximately 5,998 square feet, as part of a zoning request for the property on Patter Springs Street known as 1031, 1041, and 1044 Fleming Street. Background please, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. This item is actually related to the previous item that Mr. Thompson was up here for. And I think that the agenda title actually says everything you need to know about it. In order to do the development as proposed by Mr. Thompson, it's necessary for the city to abandon and convey some land that was originally conceived for alley use containing .01377 acres or 5,998 square feet. And we do want this project to move forward, and therefore we are happy to recommend abandoning and conveying this alleyway.
Okay. This is located in Ward 3. Councilwoman Terry Nullwitz.
Yes, I think that 19 new families living in Ward 3 is a worthy trade-off of 900 and something square feet of land. With that said, I'm happy to move at this time to approve item 4E. This is item CVY 2013-01. This is mayor and council approving the abandonment and conveyance of the alley parcel property as described in the attached legal description and as depicted on a boundary and topographic survey of Patter Springs Street dated March 1, 2013. It is being shown as a 16-foot alley parcel containing .01377 acres, I'm sorry, I was overestimated, 5,998 square feet as part of the zoning request for the property on Patter Springs Street known as 1031, 1041, and 1044 Fleming Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Nullwitz, a second by Councilman Fennell. Do want to note that this property is not needed by the city for any reason, and therefore it's appropriate to abandon it and put it back in the hands of private property owners. Everyone, please vote. The motion carries 4 to 0. Thank you. Item 5, privileged licenses, we have none. Item 6, formal business, we have two items. Item A is a public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2014, which will begin on July 1, 2013. Mr. Taylor, the background please.
Mr. Mayor, staff has been working very hard to prepare a new budget to take effect as the new fiscal year begins on July 1, 2013. This is before the fiscal year 2014 budget year. According to state law, we are required to have a public hearing. This public hearing has been properly advertised, according to state law. And so therefore, I would like to ask Kevin Klosterbor, our budget manager, to come forward and formally present the budget to the city council.
Welcome, Mr. Klosterbor.
Thank you, Mr. Nullwitz.
Pleased to see your puppy.
Thank you. As was mentioned, this is the formal budget hearing for the fiscal year 2014 budget. As proposed, this budget is $68,741,320. This is a decrease of 7.6% or a decrease of $5,672,000 from the fiscal year 2013 budget. Start with the general fund. The general fund proposed budget is $37,837,078, representing a decrease of just under $700,000 from the current fiscal year. This decrease is mainly due to just a decrease in what Finance Department projects the revenues for the upcoming fiscal year to be. This is a decline of 1.82%. A lot of that decline stems from the property tax projections. In our initial meetings with Cobb County Tax Assessor's Office, we're anticipating a 2% decline in the net digest for fiscal year 2014. While a 2% decline is still a drop, this will represent the smallest decline since the fiscal year 2009, when property taxes in recent years were at their highest. Since fiscal year 2009, to add what we're anticipating fiscal year 2014 to be, this would be a 16.6% decline in the property tax digest, all while maintaining a flat mileage rate of 8.99 mils, which again is what we had proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. This will extend our streak of no mileage rate increase to 23 years. The last time this raised was in fiscal year 1991. It has been 8.99 mils since 2007. This is just kind of breakdown of general fund revenues. Again, most of our revenues in the general fund do come from property taxes. This property tax category does extend beyond just the, what we think of as current year property taxes. It also includes franchise fees, public utilities, vehicle tax, and a few other smaller property taxes. Kind of the second largest category is charges for service. That includes your sanitation charges, prisoner housing, accident reports, and some others. And finally, other taxes includes insurance premium tax, financial institutions tax, alcoholic beverage excise tax, and other miscellaneous taxes. Just to highlight a few revenue streams that I wanted to focus more on, again, property tax, we're anticipating an $850,000 decrease in revenues from current year property taxes. That again stems from the 2% decline in the digest we're anticipating. We are anticipating an increase in the personal property vehicle taxes. Under the new House Bill 386, law that the state changed, we're anticipating revenues to increase this year as we're getting, you know, people still paying the annual ad valorem tax in addition to the new tax revenues coming in. As years progress, we will see that go back down to levels once more vehicles in the city switch over to the new one-time ad valorem tax. Franchise taxes are estimating to decrease, just based on current year actuals. Billing inspection fees, as Director of Community Development, Mr. Sudwith, mentioned earlier, we are seeing this increase for the second year in a row. This is just kind of the revenue side, seeing that we are having more billing inspection fees done in the city, indicating that the housing market is turning around. Finally, prisoner housing is again up as we are housing more of Mariettas inmates. This budget presentation actually includes three documents. It includes the fiscal year 2014 budget. It also includes the fiscal year 2014 schedule of fees and charges. So there are some fee changes proposed for the general fund. Library has proposed a new program, summer library cards, where non-residents who are 17 years of age and younger can get a summary library card for just $5. Just want to highlight that as a new program. They also are decreasing the non-resident library card fee from $40 to $25 for an individual. You can read, Parks and Rec also had some changes. They're now offering six-month memberships to Wolf Center. Parks and Recreation also had several smaller fees and rentals and charges. Those are available in the full fiscal year 2014 schedule of fees and charges. We have a copy available online for all residents to see, as well as a hard copy available in the city clerk's office for review. Police departments proposed to increase the monthly pro- Police departments proposed to increase the monthly probation fees and to restructure fees from reports from a charge per page to a $5 flat fee to hope that'd be easier to people coming getting reports. General fund expenditures, the general fund is balanced without any proposed use of reserves. This slide just shows the breakdown of some of those expenditures. While debt obligations and insurance and other benefits fall into the same category as general government services, we hope that by breaking it out, we can better show what the purpose of these expenditures are. As you can see, the largest single category in the slide is public works, though public safety as a whole makes up 32.4% of general fund expenditures, making it the highest category of expenditures from the general fund. This just breaks down those categories, gives dollar amounts with them. Community development saw an increase because new in fiscal year 2014, they're budgeting for a consultant to assist in the vision process. That explains their increase. Under debt obligations, the city of Smyrna paid off three of our existing capital leases in the current fiscal year. That's why that one has a decrease of 291,000. Also, under debt obligations, we have new bond payments for the Series 2010 bonds that do hit during the upcoming fiscal year. Staff's recommending that we pay for those out of a sinking fund containing leftover project costs, with the remainder paid for reserves that council previously set aside for future debt obligations. Insurance and other benefits will be highlighted on another slide. The decrease is due to decreases in group insurance and the required retirement contributions. Finally, general government services, this increase shown represents an increase in general fund contingency. Current year revised budget 600,000. For the proposed budget, we're increasing that to 813,000. This is the remainder of the categories from the previous slide. Library services, Parks and Rec have small decreases. Police and jail services and public works, these are both down because of fuel costs. Well, we had budgeted for fuel in the current fiscal year. Our wholesale rates, the city pays, didn't come close to it. So across the board, there's a decrease in fuel we had budgeted for the upcoming fiscal year. And also, new in public works divisions, we're budgeting 98% of salaries to estimate just turnover savings. We did that for the current fiscal year for the police admin and fire admin, and saw that it held out true in the budget. Employee benefit costs, just wanted to highlight some of these. Please note that these amounts don't match up to the general fund because these are the citywide amounts that are allocated between the four major funds that hold employees. Again, group insurance is trending down. Current year-to-date, we've budgeted down for the upcoming fiscal year. Retirement contributions are, required contributions are down because of some changes the city made to the retirement plan. So those changes we made are showing a decrease in the costs. We do have four recommended new positions in the general fund for the upcoming fiscal year. As you can see on the screen, this is a crew worker and billings and plant, a new planner, inspector in community development, new server administrator in IT, and a new captain over parole in the police. Staff is also recommending four positions be reclassified. The total payroll increase of these changes to general fund is 268,000. That is in, as you saw, the balance and falls in where the revenues are hitting for the upcoming fiscal year. Now going to special revenue funds. These are smaller funds. I will explain some of them as we move through. Total special revenue funds for fiscal year 14 is $2,868,459, representing a decrease of over 1.2 million, a decline of 30%. This seems like a lot of percent. Why it's so high is that there were two special revenue funds for grant projects in fiscal year 2013 that are not continuing into fiscal year 2014. These are the Fire Station 5 Construction Fund. Construction's complete, the station is now operating, and the Fire Station Personnel Safer Grant. The grant period ended, and those six firefighters have been moved to fire admin payroll. Kind of to hit on some of these special revenue funds, the auto rental tax fund is a new one. We had to, the finance started this fund for this upcoming fiscal year to comply with the state charter of accounts. We are now receiving revenues from the auto rental tax into this fund and then transferring them to Hotel Motel. CDBG funds holds our expenditures and offsetting grant revenue from the Community Development Block Grants Federal Grant Program. Confiscated assets fund holds Smyrna's portion of assets seized by the Marietta-Cobb County-Smyrna Joint Police Task Force. This is just budgeted on cash on hand. It's down because they've been spending it and haven't gotten any new revenues in. Donations and special fees hold several smaller cash accounts used to account for various city functions. Some examples of these are Records Management Tree Bank Fund, John Coljogh Community Garden, and a new cash account set up for fiscal year 14 for Food Truck Tuesdays. The E-911 Fund receives state-mandated E-911 fees that phone providers collect and pass on to the city. The revenues do cover majority of the expenditures, but I do want to point out that there is a subsidy from the general fund of 306,000 to E-911 Fund. The Hotel Motel Fund receives revenues from Hotel Motel Taxes and Auto Tax Rental Fund. 36% of these revenues are passed on to the Cobb Marietta Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority per an intergovernmental agreement we have with that agency. The remaining expenditures are used for promoting travel and tourism. Please note that the upcoming fiscal year budget does include a use of reserves out of that fund in the amount of $30,492. Finally, the multiple grant fund receives various public safety-related grants and is also budgeted as cash on hand. For the capital projects fund, fiscal year 2014 total is $9,359,153, representing a decrease of just over 500,000, or a decline of 5.07%. The 2005 SPOS Fund has no new budget, though there is a remaining cash balance that will be spent down to complete some of those projects. Most of the 2014 budget of capital projects lies in the 2011 SPOS Fund and $500,000 in revenues for the CIP. We have 10 projects that we're going, that staff's recommending funding through the general fund CIP. Total amount, 541,200. Just to touch on some of these, the financial software, we're still implementing Tyler Munis citywide. This is actually paid for through the GMA lease pool. This 168,000 just to cover the lease payments. The police cruisers, this will replace four police cruisers in the upcoming year, and police computer replacements. This is to replace some police computers to the Panasonic Semi-Ruggedized Toughbooks, though staff is still looking into the possibility of using iPads with ruggedized shelves in the future. As I said, the total CIP projects for the upcoming fiscal year proposed at 541,200. 500,000 will come from general fund revenues, and we are recommending a use of CIP fund reserves of 41,200. This is one other document that is separate from the, is included in the budget, is the CIP Capital Improvement Plan. This slide just highlights that it is a five-year look at funding the city's future capital project needs. Each year, the staff will continue to review these projects as they come up, so this will be adjusted again for the upcoming year. But as it stands now, this is the five-year look, what we're recommending council adopt. Getting into water sewer fund. Staff's proposing water sewer fund at $18,676,630. It's a decrease of just over 3.2 million. The decrease is explained because in the current fiscal year 2013, there's a $3.2 million one-time project out of renewal and extension for Belmont Hills. So that explains all the decrease into the coming fiscal year. There are some water sewer fee changes. Those are also found in the fiscal year 2014 schedule of fees and charges. Staff is anticipating a wholesale rate increase from the Cobb Marietta Water Authority. Under our current city ordinances, this will be passed on immediately to our citizens in the same percentage increase. Staff is recommending all other rates and charges in the water sewer fund be increased 6.5% across the board. This is just to cover, you know, needed operating and maintenance of the water system. What this will mean to the residents is, as shown on the chart at the bottom, if a resident has 2,000 gallon consumption, this will increase their monthly bill by $1.96, by $3.28 for 5,000 gallons, and $5.48 increase for a resident using 10,000 gallons a month. Staff is also recommending new fees for fire line backflow meters. Water sewer expenditures, this shows a breakdown. Almost half of the water sewer fund expenditures is just to purchase water from wholesale to, just to supply the system. The second highest is operating expenses to operate the system. Third highest is infrastructure expense to maintain the system, to ensure we have our water systems, sewer system, and stormwater systems going into the future. This is the water sewer portion of the CIP. We're recommending the same amounts be funded as current and past fiscal years, $1.7 million in infrastructure improvements, $200,000 in drainage improvements, 764,000 in stormwater projects. We recommend that these all come out of just water sewer fund revenues. The water fund, like the general fund, is balanced without use or transfer to reserves. Again, this is just a look at the five-year water fund CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. It, like the general fund, just represents a five-year look at what staff believes our capital needs are going into the future. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions, should the council have any.
Councilman Fennell.
Kevin, for the public who is willing to delve into the details, tell them how they can access this document that you shared with us and the even further detail within the budget on our website.
Sure thing, yeah. The budget book is currently on our website. My presentation, I'll make sure, is uploaded to the website tomorrow, so they can access those right now. I also will have hard copies of my presentation in the budget book that will be available in the city clerk's office for review between 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday.
So any citizen who wants to access that and share their thoughts on anything they view there can contact their ward representative to have that view reflected.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No, I do not. I wanted to note that the next hearing, again, will take place on June 3 at same bat time, same bat channel.
Kevin, if you'd stand by, this was advertised as a public hearing, so at this time, if there are any citizens that have any questions or comments to make about the proposed budget, please come forward. Mr. Klosterbor, it appears you're going to get off easy tonight. I will say, this is, developing a budget is one of the most, if not the most important thing that we as elected officials do every year. Really, a sacred trust that citizens have with us to protect their money and spend it wisely and use it for the things that they envision us using it for is so very important, and it's something that our staff works very, very hard on for many, many months, all the way down to, from the top to the bottom, everybody participates in trying to figure out what our requirements are going to be, and then how we're going to find revenue to meet all those requirements. Requires a number of tough decisions. The budget that Kevin has presented is a draft, it's proposed. It is not yet final. I expect that the elected officials working together with staff will continue to make some changes to the budget. We hope to have a final version presenting on June 3. And at that point, absent any major bar fights, if you will, over the budget, we can vote to pass it. If we have to put it off, then we can table it for two weeks and do it again on June 20. But Kevin, I want to thank you for preparing for the elected officials, very detailed, the best I've ever seen, and I've been here 26 years, the best budget presentation I've ever seen. I don't, I'm not saying I agree with everything in there, but the information that you presented is concise, it's well organized, it's detailed. Something came up in our pre-meeting tonight, I want to say to the citizens, and Kevin said, oh, you can find that information on page 264, or whatever it was. Several of us looked around, I mean, to say he knows where this information is is an understatement because he's been working on it for a year. You know, we start working on the new budget, the minute the new fiscal year starts, we start working, preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. Kevin, I want to thank you for your work to our finance director and all the staff, and to all the departments that have participated in this process. We know it's tough, we know it's onerous at times, we know not everybody gets everything that they want. That's life. We're all familiar with it. But it's a great job, and we appreciate you working with us and the citizens to do the right thing with the government's money here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under formal business, item 6B is authorize a resolution and declaration of taking of 1,346 square feet for a temporary construction easement at 1513 Veneta Way for the Cathy Lane culvert replacement project. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
As you just mentioned, Public Works has scheduled a replacement for the road drainage project of the box culvert on Cathy Lane. In order for this project to move forward, a temporary construction easement is necessary for the removal and installation of this road drainage culvert. And therefore, we do ask that mayor and council authorize a resolution and declaration of taking of 1,346 square feet of temporary construction easement at 1513 Veneta Way for this project.
Just as way of a little bit more background, Cathy Lane has got a culvert that's fairly deep over a creek, a running creek, where the culvert has large cracks in it. You can see the roadway beginning to sink. Our Poly Works director and city engineer have properly identified that, you know, we'd love to leave it alone, but we can't just leave it alone because eventually that culvert's going to give way. And then the homes on the other side of that culvert, on a cul-de-sac, have no way in, no way out, whether it's to go to the grocery store, go to the drugstore, or to have an ambulance or fire truck go up there. We need to provide safe vehicular access, as well as pedestrian access to those homes. So, you know, this is going to be a big project, but it needs to be done. We've attempted to negotiate a construction easement, have been unsuccessful, and so council is left with, you know, this situation tonight to, we're not taking any land, per se, but we're buying, if you will, the right to access part of it during the construction period, after which staff has promised to put it back the way it was and leave it just as good or better than we found it. And, you know, we'll have a new improved road and box culvert under the road to go forward 50 or 100 years, however long that culvert will last. But that's a little bit of the background. The culvert is cracked and, you know, in danger of collapsing, and this project needs to be done. Any questions from council? Mr. Fennell.
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. You made a very detailed account of what will happen. We're going to repair, for public safety purposes, a culvert that is important for the residents nearby. But we also, while disrupting this homeowner for a short period of time, we're going to return it to as close to, if not better than, the condition we found it, and compensate this homeowner to the tune of about $1,200. So with that in mind.
That is correct. And Mr. Stokes and I have met with her personally last week, and she identified for us in particular some flowers from her deceased sister that were important to her, and Mr. Stokes has promised to do everything in his power to protect those. At this time, I need a motion on this resolution and declaration of taking. Motion by Councilwoman Terry Nellowitz. Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Andrea Bluestein. Any further discussion? Everyone, please vote. The motion is approved, four to zero. Thank you. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is the consent agenda. I'll ask City Administrator Eric Taylor to read the consent agenda for the council.
We have seven items on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor. Item A is an approval of the mayor and council minutes for the meeting of May 6, 2013. Item B is to award RFP 2013-066 for replacement and storage of banners to the low bidder Commercial Signs Incorporated in the amount of $22,560, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C is to award RFQ 13-030 Linwood Drive Drainage Project to the lowest bidder, Ardeto Construction Company, for $27,000, and authorize the mayor to execute any associated documents. Item D is to award bid RFQ 13-028 for North Cooper Lake Drainage Project to the lowest bidder, Ardeto Construction Company, for $20,880. bidder, Ardeto Construction Company, for $20,885, and authorize the mayor to execute any associated documents. Item E is the approval of 2013 CDBG subrecipient agreement for use of community development block grant funds in the amount of $238,060 between Cobb County and the City of Smyrna, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute agreement. I should note that the three projects we have for that, one of them is for continuing our Ward 5 code enforcement officer. Second item is to replace some storm sewer work over in Ward 5, but the majority of the money is going to be going towards an all-access playground for all kids to be developed over in Cobb Park, over at Kitscape. Item F is an approval to close the road for a graduation block party on May 25, 2013, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The route to be blocked off is 1102 to 1088 Huntington Trace Drive. And item G is to approval of bid award RFQ 13-029 for dehumidification unit installation at the Wolf Center Pool in the amount of $99,423.1 to the lowest qualified bidder, Bramlett Mechanical, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Fennel, Councilman Fennel, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Terry Nullowitz. Everyone, please vote. Consent agenda is approved, four to zero. We have no committee reports tonight, or show cause hearings, well, actually, we'll go to committee reports. I'll start with Councilwoman Andrea Bluestein, Ward 2.
Actually, the month of April this year was almost identical to the month of April last year, which, in this case, is a positive sign, as we had a lot of activity. Just to give you an update on our new dwelling for FY 13, for the whole calendar, I mean, the whole fiscal year, we're at 202 units, and for the calendar year, just the four and a half months, we're already at 101. So we are well above last year's 203 calendar aspect, in terms of, we've done half in four and a half months. So things are continuing to improve. Our walk-in traffic has also increased on a calendar basis from average of 115 to 142. So obviously, the more traffic that's coming in, the more interest there is. So, again, as I've stated in the past, I'd hope to continue stating in the future, it's, all the numbers are positive.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to do is remind you that next Monday is our Memorial Day Ceremony, it will be held at the War Memorial. Sitting will begin at 8:30, the, I can't think of the word now, anyway, the presentations and all will begin at 9:30. And one other thing, I don't know, you know, I'm so tired of rain, tired of rain, I just feel like, you know, it's just been a wild spring. However, think about the poor people in Oklahoma, they have just lived through two days of absolute terror with all of these tornadoes that are hitting them, so say a prayer for them. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Bluestein, Councilwoman Terry Nullowitz.
Yes, I'd like to see if Finance Director Tony Joe Howard has anything additional to report. She's walking up, I'm going to take a moment, again, to thank the Finance Department Director Tony Joe Howard, Budget Officer Kevin Klosterbauer, for all of the hard work they did. This was a phenomenal budget document, the narrative was absolutely, and it was invaluable, as we, as the council have been discussing this. It was a lot of hard work, and it truly is a collaboration with not just the Finance Department, but among, with every department head and every staff member in the city. And thank you again for all the hard work that you and your team did.
I just wanted to let everyone know, we're continuing, of course, on with our immunist implementation. The thing that we're working on right now is the conversion for our property tax information. As part of that conversion, we are looking at what that bill looks like as it goes out to the citizens. One thing that we've noticed is that we'd like to be able to identify each of the exemptions that they qualify for, so that that information is easily seen to the citizen. If there's any suggestions that anyone has, they can contact me directly at 678-631-5326, or they can email me at tjhoward@smyrna-ga.gov. With any comments or suggestions, we'd love to consider that. If we're going to update it or make a change, this is the time to do it to those property tax bills. Additionally, we're going to be going through the same process for our utility billing, so if someone has comments or suggestions for that, we'd love to hear from that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Howard, and while you're talking about property taxes, I'll just let you know that in the mail today came my annual assessment notice, which showed no change in the valuation on my home. I'm sure homeowners all across Smyrna, today, maybe Saturday, certainly tomorrow, will get their assessment notices, so we should be able to get some up-to-date information from the tax assessor's office.
Yes, we received ours today as well. And then, again, the next budget hearing, the public hearing, is going to take place on June 3rd. If you do, again, have any, would like any additional information, you'd like to read the budget, you can read through a hard copy in the city clerk's office from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. You can also go to smyrnacity.com, there's a link to the budget from the homepage, as well as links to the, all of the documents that were presented tonight, and additional narrative information on the budget. Now, I'd also like to invite Jennifer Bennett up to talk about what's going on in community relations. It's been a very busy week or so in Smyrna, and I don't think it's going to be less busy.
This week in particular, our thoughts and prayers are in Oklahoma, but we have an opportunity tomorrow as a community to enjoy each other while we can, in very good weather at Food Truck Tuesday. I'd like to announce that Georgia Power and Cobb Travel and Tourism have joined us as community partners in sponsoring Food Truck Tuesday. Tomorrow night, you should see a lot of interactive from Georgia Power, including a couple of electric vehicles. Once a month, they'll be bringing out electric vehicles, you'll see Nissans, Fords, and some other surprises along the way. And we'll be having a full set of bands that we'll be announcing fairly soon, so. Any questions?
Super great news.
Yeah, will the truck lineup be on the website?
Actually, we've fed it out on the Facebook page today. We'll be working at putting the lineups in each of the mentions on the city website soon. We've been working pretty hard to get it all out.
You have done a fantastic job.
Thank you. We have a team of people working really hard.
Oh, I know. You guys have done a great job. We just need to find a way now to get the latecomers in, because they drive by and they go, there's no place to park.
Yeah, that's where, if you live close by and you can walk, I'd do it, because that means more room for other people or your neighbors who live a little further away. So, and I also want to thank our parking partners, Community Bank of the South, Smyrna Presbyterian, and Covenant Christian, and at some point down the line, we expect Campbell Middle School to come online, too. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bennett, I also want to add my voice to the reception that citizens have for this. I had guests who came into town and had a chance to see Bronner Park strewn with kids playing, people on blankets, and grandparents walking through the park, holding hands. It was a wonderful example of what we're trying to do for Smyrna, and the team has done a great job pulling this together. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll convey your thanks to them. It's a beautiful park, but it's more beautiful with all the people in it, isn't it? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, on behalf of Councilman Corky Welch, I would like to invite Public Works Director Scott Stokes up to give his update. Well, then, we're moving right along. I wanted to take a second to, again, wish Jessica Melton a world of luck, and best wishes and congratulations for your next endeavor. She has been invaluable as we have implemented the Granicas platform, and I cannot think of a more natural progression for her career to move over and give them her talents, because we have really benefited from her talent. And just thank you very much. And then I also wanted to recognize the Smyrna Rotary. They had the first of what will hopefully be an annual event yesterday at Bronner Park. It was moved inside to Bronner Hall. It was the Scoop of Smyrna, and I have to show now.
Here she goes.
Here I go. They asked me to, I said I would. That I won the best scoop of Smyrna. It was for roasted strawberry buttermilk ice cream, and it was, I think, delicious. But I was actually very surprised and delighted to win, because there were some fantastic scoops, and you may be hearing about another one of the winners as we move on down the row here. But it was a great event, I hope it becomes an annual event, it's a great way to support literacy and the Rotary. I wanted to mention, I'm going to mention a few more things, and then I'm not sure if someone else is going to be bringing Keeps Smyrna Beautiful up, otherwise, I'm happy to bring.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, actually, I'll go ahead and bring Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Director Ann Kirk up right now, to give her a departmental update on behalf of, I'm inviting her up on behalf of Councilman Welch.
Thank you so much. I just have a couple of things. The fresh market is up and running, and we will have approximately 12 to 14 vendors when we get to full pool, so to speak. We're a little short right now, because the cool weather has held back some of the fresh vegetables that are being grown locally, but we do have things being brought from South Georgia and plant material. And on June the 8th, we will be having a big, huge plant sale by the Johnquill Garden Club, and these ladies have been scouting their own yards to pull out rare and precious plants that they are divining and sharing with the public, and they do this to raise money for a scholarship for a horticulture student at Chattahoochee Tech. So this keeps it in the community, and come out and see what lovely plants that they have. And speaking of plants, we had our fifth annual garden tour on Saturday. We got off to a little slow start with the rain in the morning, but things, the rain held off, and it was actually a beautiful day. The city looked gorgeous, not just the gardens that were on the tour, but everyone that was going through the city to get to these homes was really treated to some beautiful blooms, because the same weather that's held off the vegetables has also held off the blooms, and we have a lot of things in bloom now that we wouldn't normally be able to enjoy. So it was a great event, we had over 50 volunteers who gave over 170 hours, some of them were there all day, and this was only the day of the event, not including all the planning that went into it. We think we raised probably over $9,000. This will go to plant trees at Bronner Park, but also along the walking trails that are being installed in our community. So thanks to everyone that came out, and everyone that participated, and we are looking for homes for next year. We're going out Thursday afternoon, actually, to scout, so if anyone would like to put their home on the tour, this is a good way to judge what it looks like now, it will probably look that good next year, so give us a call at our office. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. And the last thing I'd like to note is, I am delighted about the universally accessible playground equipment that's going to be installed at Cobb Park through community development block grant, that CDBG funding that was mentioned when we were going over the consent agenda. Universally accessible means that this playground equipment can be enjoyed and utilized by children of all abilities, regardless of their physical abilities, their sensory, any sensory issues they might have, any neurological issues they might have. This is playground equipment that all children can play on. It's a wonderful thing, there are not many parks like this around the metro area, there's a very large one in Centennial Olympic Park across from the aquarium, and I'm just absolutely thrilled that we're able to bring a park like this to Smyrna, where it can be enjoyed by all children in our community. And with that, I yield.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I would like to say that I had the pleasure of speaking to two classes of 5th graders at Norton Park last week, and talking to them about local government, and they had a lot of good questions, and I really enjoyed the visiting with the school, and it seems like a really good school, so encourage people that want to move to Smyrna and that area to check that school out. And I'd also like to call Mary Moore from the Smyrna Library to give us a report. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to invite all Smyrna residents to come down to the library to sign up for the summer reading program. Our kickoff party for kids and families is Saturday, June the 1st, at 1:00 p.m. at the community center. Magician and ventriloquist Keith Karnock will entertain us and encourage everyone to dig into reading, which is our theme this year. Babies through teens can win prizes by completing weekly challenge sheets, and then there'll also be a drawing of prizes at the end of summer. Thanks to the Friends of the Library, the grand prize in the teen raffle will be a Google Nexus tablet, which is pretty cool. And also, for the first summer ever, we will have an adult summer reading program, so even grown-ups can have reading incentives and events, and will also have a chance to win a Google Nexus. If you want to get full details about the program, you can go to www.smyrna-library.com. And then I also have a very brief little anecdote I want to share with you about something that happened today at the library. We have, and as you walk into the library in the foyer there, we have an exhibit that a lot of my staff members collaborated on, on baseball, and they took an article from the local paper about a local gentleman who was involved in a baseball movie, and it's a display of books and DVDs. And one of our patrons came in today and pulled one of our reference librarians aside, and had one of the books from the display called Southern League, and he had a personal scrapbook with him, and he said, "I want to tell you that I was very excited to see this book in this display, because I was a Bat Boy for one of the teams that's profiled in this book." And his scrapbook had newspaper clippings and stories about all the different people who were profiled in that book. And what was so cool about this is that he said, "If you had not done this display, I would not know that this book existed." And he was just so thrilled to be able to share his stories, and he went and told all his friends about the book, and said, "Come to the library and check this book out." And, you know, librarians talk all the time about how libraries build community, but what I loved about this story, when my librarian told me this, is that this story illustrates how a library can touch an individual in a very real and meaningful way, and that just makes my job so rewarding. And I just want to thank the council and the community and the mayor for continuing to support the library and give me a really cool job. Thanks a lot. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for the story, too. And now I'd like to call Steve Ciaccio. He's going to give us a report on the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It is time for Tolleson Pool to be open again, can you believe it? 3590 King Springs Road is where Tolleson is located, and admission is $3 for kids under 16, $5 for adults. Swim passes can be had for individuals and for families as well. Night swim doesn't start until July, because we have the swim team in there until that time. Returning patrons are going to find a lot of improvements, not only to the exterior of the building, but also to the interior. That was your sploshed dollars at work. You'll really like what you see when you come back. Resident-only concert series rental tables went on sale this past Saturday at the Wolf Center, you can still buy those, residents, until May 28th. June and July concert tables are $25, and the August birthday celebration is $30. The public input questionnaire for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, I noticed this evening, is still on the website, my fault, Ms. Bennett, but last week, we were supposed to take that down, and so I want to let you know there was many, many hundreds of folks that responded to that questionnaire, and we are happy for their input, so we'll let you know how that turns out. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Anything further, Susan?
With that, I yield.
Councilman Ron Fennel, Ward 7.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, wanted to congratulate Terry Nullowitz for winning the very first annual Smyrna Rotary's, what is it called, Scoop of Smyrna. She had the best ice cream. Now, my wife brought a recipe, and they had four categories, best vanilla-based, vanilla-based, best chocolate-based, best fruit-based, and then overall- best chocolate-based, best fruit-based, and then overall best. Terry won overall best. My wife's grandmother's recipe of banana won the best fruit-based. So congratulations to my wife. I just had the privilege of scooping it and occasionally eating some of it. But it was a great event. Smyrna Rotary is to be commended for utilizing our facility, getting people to come out and participate and celebrate as families at a very family-friendly event. Despite the rain, over 50 attendees, and thanks to Steve and the team for letting them move indoors with the program, it worked out very nicely. And Smyrna Rotary is continuing to raise money for projects, primarily education in the community, and we commend them for that. Jade Tretwell, President of the Smyrna Rotary, and congratulations to the other winners as well. I want to also commend the parents, the coaches, and the folks who organized this year Smyrna baseball and soccer to allow our young people to get full recreational benefit out of our facilities here in Smyrna. My two kids had a blast in both of those sports, and I just wanted to thank all of those people who committed countless hours to make sure the experience was a quality one for our young people. Very important for what we do here in Smyrna to make a family destination. By the way, the Smyrna Kowanus Club reminds me that the onions have arrived. So if you've purchased onions in advance, they've arrived, they'll be distributed this week. I was asked to bring that to your attention. Smyrna Fresh Market, where's Jennifer? 8:00 to noon this Saturday, is that correct? 8:00 to noon, just across the street, here in the parking lot of First Baptist. So please take advantage. That's a great place for you to get fresh produce. And I know, Anne, you mentioned it, but I have to do that. I'd like to have Chief Lanning come give us a brief report from the Fire Department. As he's coming, I want to thank him and the heroes that joined today with two tables at the Armack Luncheon, the Atlanta Regional Military Affairs Committee, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of that today. And in fact, the majority of council had the privilege of being a part of that. Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. I hear all these activities, and this kind of ties in what I'm going to talk about. I don't have a really great feel-good story. This is going to be some information about a medical problem that we see every time, every year, this same time. I want to talk just a few minutes, and mainly to the folks that are watching on TV or on the Internet, about this time of the year and what happens with our call volume as far as people in heat-related emergencies. We have a very active community. Alls you need to do is step outside, and you'll see that there's a lot of activity. And we are very close to the temperatures reaching the point. I think some of you probably felt it today, felt a little bit like Asana. Couple weeks from now, it'll be really warm. And so I just want to talk for just a few seconds about heat-related emergencies. It's something that's, I guess, overlooked by a lot of people, but there's still about 300 people a year that die in the United States from heat-related emergencies. And so I just wanted to touch a few things about that. Actually, hyperthermia is what we're talking about, overheating in the body. Three main kinds are heat cramps, heat stroke, and heat exhaustion. Heat stroke is definitely the point when you reach where you're not sweating anymore. Most people are familiar with that. That is a life-threatening emergency that can be fatal immediately. So at that point, you do need to go to the hospital. There are certain groups of people that are more apt to have these problems: the elderly, infants and young children, the obese, and people with other medical conditions. So you really need to watch those groups of people when you're out and about in the upcoming months, during the summer months. Some of the signs and symptoms, and I think this is probably the most part to take away from this little talk, is what do you need to actually look for? Headache, nausea, weakness, dizziness, feigning, muscle cramps, seizures, confusion, and coma. We've seen all of it here, and I'm sure some of you have probably witnessed some of this. What do you do if you have these problems? The main thing is to get the person into a cool area, sit them down and rehydrate them. How do you prevent these? The use of sunscreen, limiting your time outside, especially if you're not acclimated to the hot environment, and hydrate, hydrate, hydrate. That's a huge problem in the fire service, particularly, we spend a lot of time monitoring the hydration of the firefighters because they're dehydrated so quickly. But you, if you're not acclimated to being outside, and you pick a 90-something-degree day and decide you're going for that mile run, you very well could fall victim to one of these. And I just kind of want to get the word out, how to prevent that from happening. That's all I have. Heat-related emergencies, coming quick.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for all the team. Deputy Chief Brown, bring some good news from the Police Department. We'll tell you that of late, the activity has picked up considerably. If you're drinking and driving on a Smyrna street, you won't do it for long. We've got the Gray Bar Hotel up there, and I think we are adding guests daily.
First of all, I'd like to say that if you had to make, like, a lot of that ice cream, if you need to get rid of it, we'd be glad to help you out at the Police Department.
I have about a quart or so of chocolate cayenne that I can bring by if you have somewhere to put it in the freezer.
Absolutely. My office is on the second floor.
It's awesome.
And there's a refrigerator up there, so.
Chocolate with a kick. It's good stuff.
Good evening. I'm like, I have some of the arrest information that you just mentioned, Mr. Fennel. I'm not going to go over every arrest that we made, but I'll just tell you that overall arrests for the April 2013 as opposed to 2012 was up 153%, highlighted by the DUI arrests, which were up 450%. So you're right, Mr. Fennel. If you intend to drink and drive in the city of Smyrna, we don't want you here, number one. But if you come here, you are certainly running the risk of arrest, and we mean business. Our newly formed DUI task force-
Three hearts and a flop.
Yes, that's right, have been very, very busy. And so we're pleased to announce that if you drink and drive in Smyrna, you're going to get arrested. On a positive note, this past week, the Police Department promoted six individuals, four to sergeant and two to lieutenant. We promoted two sergeant, Detective Rick James, Corporal Michael Smith, Corporal Tim Sharple's, and Corporal Celeste Roush are now all sergeants with the Police Department. And two lieutenant, we promoted Sergeant John Carter and Sergeant Frank Durren. So congratulate them, all of them. They've done a great job. And it's a long promotional process they went through, so we're very appreciative of them. We began the first Smyrna Police Department Citizens Police Academy this evening. In fact, I spoke there and then came directly over here to this meeting, and we're very excited about it. It is full, and we unfortunately had to turn on a few people, but we have to limit the number of classes. That will continue. This one goes through July, and then at some point, probably this fall, we'll begin another police academy. And if that's something you would be interested in, when that is going, when the date is announced, that will be placed on the Smyrna website, and we would invite anyone that may be interested in that to apply for the police academy. So with that, I'm through. If anybody has any questions, thank you.
Very good, Chief. Thank you very much. I've been privileged for about 15 years to be on the board of a not-for-profit group called Team Georgia. It's a safe-driving and boating coalition. And every year around the holiday season, when boating starts to go, we go around the state and promote safe boating practices and safe driving practices. So as has been admonished for those who may drink and drive to come through Smyrna, we're trying to make sure that our partners in the State Patrol and law enforcement across the state, including the DNR, keep our highways and our waterways safe. If you're going out this upcoming holiday season, please take precautions. Make sure that you and your party arrive safely by designating either a driver, or if you're on the waterways, designating a skipper. And you'll hear more about that in the coming days on the media. But I just wanted to give Smyrnans an opportunity to be first at hearing that news and participating. I also want to urge you, if you have an opportunity, when you encounter one of the members of our public safety team in the community who are fighting every day to protect our property and our lives and our community's well-being, please do like I tried to do and thank them for their service and thank them for putting their lives on the line for us every single day. Finally, we're about to celebrate a Memorial Day holiday. It's really a seminal moment for us to pause and reflect on those fallen heroes who have gone before. This month, also, we recognize fallen heroes in our public safety community in addition to what Memorial Day represents for our men and women in uniform who have protected us around the globe and here at home. And I just want to add my voice to those who celebrate that holiday and look forward to seeing the gathering here, as Smyrna has done for a long time, to recognize that day for its proper and appropriate recognition and remembrance. And then finally, just want to remind you about the Relay for Life on May 31st, 6:00 PM at Lovett School. If you want to participate, contact me here at the City of Smyrna or American Cancer Society directly. And if you want to be on my newsletter list, it's ronfennel@me.com, or you can contact me through my Smyrna email address. With that, I conclude my report, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to circle back to Ward 5, Councilwoman Susan Wilkinson, please.
I just wanted to mention the Smyrna Garden Tour that I went on on Saturday, and it was a wonderful event. And if you've never been on the event, you should really try it if you like outdoors and plants and flowers. It's really a lot of fun. And I wanted to also thank all the residents that shared their gardens with us, and also all the volunteers that helped to make that event successful. Thanks. With that, I yield.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you. Earlier tonight, when Jennifer Bennett was up here, she was talking about Smyrna Food Truck Tuesday being tomorrow night. And so I went onto the Facebook page and thought I'd let everybody know what my lineup is for the week. And we have Blacksekin, we have Buena Provecho, Freckled in Blue, Hail Caesar, Happy Belly, Abiza Bites, King of Pops, Mixed Up, Supernoodles, Yumby, and of course, the always great Yum Yum Cupcake. The band for the week is Waller. And if anybody would like to check them out before tomorrow night, you can go to www.hollerforwaller.com. Secondly, I feel like, you know, I also want to recognize the work that Jessica Melton has put in for the city this year. Jessica is the fourth management fellow that we've had for the city. Previous three, first one was Monica Jones, second was Jared Sigmund, third was Kevin Klosterbohr, who you all saw here tonight presenting the budget. Jared is still with us, working in economic development, doing a great job. And Monica, it was about this time last year that Monica was actually leaving the city to go work for the city of Dayton, Ohio in a similar capacity. We were promoting Kevin into the position being vacated by Monica, that we actually received an unsolicited email, resume, from Jessica. Her email said, "Hey, I'm looking for something to do for free." So, huh?
That was the right?
Yeah, so that was the right price. And so, you know, and we pulled up her resume and looked at it, and, you know, it turns out that she met the qualifications, had a master's of public administration, had all the other qualifications that we looked for in this program. And she was actually the only one of the four who did not come to us through the ICMA program, where candidates are actually vetted by city managers from across the country. Jessica's done an excellent job for us this year. I think we bear some responsibility for her new job in that after Susan Hyatt resigned, we had a void in this new software that we were in the process of implementing, Granicus. And so we asked Jessica to step in and take ownership and help us get through this process until a new city clerk came on board. And so obviously, the folks at Granicus saw what we saw, and they're getting a, you know, a fine person. And I think it's great that, you know, she's working in a field where she actually knows a little bit about what it is she's doing. And even better, she won't be very far from us. She's still a resident of Smyrna, and she will be a product trainer. And so I expect that we, our paths will be crossing again in the future. So I wish her the best of luck, and thank her for her service to the city. I yield.
And Mr. Taylor, before we move on, I want to also note that the accolades that we've given the staff for their budget work also apply to you-
Thank you.
-for leading that team. Thank you for putting all that together and for giving us a team that has the capabilities that it does. Jeffrey Tucker sitting in for Scott Cochran, any words of wisdom to share with us?
No report tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Terry Graham, our city clerk. Our HR representative, Rachel Ballard, has no report tonight. Jessica, I'd like to offer you a point of personal privilege if you'd like to make any comments.
I just want to thank everyone for their comments tonight. It means a great deal to me, and I am looking forward to possibly working with the city in the future. Like you said, I will be a Smyrna citizen, so I'm not going far. And I want to thank you for the experience that everyone has given me in my 11 months here. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been mentioned several times, but I do want to restate again, Memorial Day Ceremony in downtown Smyrna, Monday, May 27th, starts promptly at 9:30. Our keynote speaker is Ranger Sergeant First Class Michael Schlitz, wounded warrior, 83 operations to date that I'm aware of, third-degree burns over 85% of his body, lost both his hands from an IED explosion in Iraq. A phenomenal, inspirational individual that you and your family will want to hear speak. And we also have Rabbi Jeff Feinstein, who served as a rifleman in Vietnam, saw heavy combat. He will also speak to us. And I think it's a first-class ceremony, best in metro Atlanta, and if you miss it, you're going to miss something that we can't recreate for you. At this time, I'd like to note that the agenda calls for citizen input. We have one citizen who has signed up, Larissa Edwards at 304 Hickory, I'm not sure if it's Street or Lane. Her topic is public debate. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone on the council and friends of Smyrna. My name is Larissa Edwards. I am the Messiah, and I am here to prove it. First, I'd like to thank the council for giving the public the opportunity to speak for three whole minutes live on the Internet every meeting. You guys will never know just how valuable those three minutes are. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to give everybody a free lesson on the relativity of time. You ready? Okay. You know the guy in the commercial who sits still and he's not moving, and everything is moving really, really fast around him? Well, that's kind of like what Divine Order offers. Divine Order slows time down tremendously, so three minutes is actually a whole lot of time. And I really want to thank you guys for that, okay? So if I have confused anybody on the relativity of time, I apologize. But if you have any questions for me, please stop me at the end of the meeting and ask me any questions. But right now, I am pressed for time, okay? So why am I here? I am here to go over the preliminaries of the public debate that I offered you guys last time you saw me, and I hope you guys will really consider having this debate because I think it'd be really positive for Smyrna and it'd help people because I'm trying to get public leaders to be peacemakers, something that everybody can relate to. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to offer you guys a series of topics for debate, and when you hear a topic that you guys are knowledgeable enough to debate about, just raise your hand, and I'll make a note of it. Likewise, anyone in the audience, if you hear something about, you know, a topic that you think that you would like to hear us debate about, hold your hand up, please, and I'll make a note of it because this is a public event, okay? So the first topic is aggression, the unmitigated problem. Does anyone in here know enough about aggression to debate about it and offer solutions to reduce attack? Anybody? Would anybody like any suggestions on it or hear a debate about it? All right. What about AIDS, HIV? Does anybody in here know enough about HIV to debate about it and suggest real solutions to reduce the numbers of infected? Anybody would like to learn about it? All right. What about this one? What about the economy? Does anybody know enough about the economy to debate about it publicly? Anybody? You guys know about that? Well, anyway, I know my time is limited, so I would like to leave you guys to go, to ponder over some of these things because I really do think it'd be a positive thing for the city of Smyrna and Smyrna residents. Any questions? No? Well, have a good night. Peace and hair grease, fellas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other business to be brought forward tonight? If not, I will declare this meeting adjourned at 9:25 PM. Good evening.
Peace and hair.